Madam Chair, looks like we still have the guests that were here earlier.
Oh great.
Oh great, sorry everyone, technical difficulties. Okay, so we're moving up the 2025 budget development first draft.
Madam Chair. Label seven A in your packet is a the typical Town of the Heart budget worksheet. This one is labeled fiscal twenty five budget worksheet. Superintendent's budget first draft eleven fourteen twenty three. Chris and I have taken the expenditures that are in this year's budget. When we know how much next year's budget is going to cost, we changed the numbers in the far right column. When I didn't know, I took a guess to how much it would take. Also behind that five page document, you have a document from the Operational Services Division in Tumulaw, Massachusetts, which has established an estimated rate of inflation for educational purposes for two thousand twenty five at four point six nine percent. This the page behind that is their worksheet that establishes how they determined that it was going to cost four point six nine percent more than things cost in fiscal twenty four. So you see a component list of things like personnel, payroll tax, direct line wages, et cetera, et cetera. And then the the bottom line is one hundred and four point six nine percent, which means it's everything that is in the budget this year plus four point six nine percent. So with that as a basis of my calculation, I added four percent to all of the line items that I wasn't aware of any cost increase. What I'm gonna do this evening is simply highlight the ones that aren't four percent.
Okay.
Okay? So on page one, the salaries of the superintendent's office and the principal's office are three percent. Because that's matching the union increases for next year, which are three percent. We already know because we have a contract in place, right? On page two, on the second line, the first line with numbers in below the zero, that number is a three percent increase in the regular full-time employees plus one additional teacher estimated at a master's three level. Because I am anticipating in at this stage of the budget that next year we will have nine classroom teachers, one kindergarten, two first grade, one second grade, one third grade, two fourth grade, one fifth grade, and one sixth grade as compared to this year where we have two kindergarten, one first, one second, two third, one fourth, one fifth, and no sixth grade. So the cost of a sixth grade classroom has been evaluated and estimated in this budget.
And this.
By the way, stop me anytime.
Yeah, can you just, what is the salary of that three? What is the clock?
Off the top of my head, um, no. I have a worksheet in my office, but I didn't bring it with me. I apologize. Sixty three-ish?
Sorry, what initial question?
What is an M three value?
Oh, okay, the one inch. Yeah, yeah.
I believe it's about sixty three thousand, but I'll verify that and I'll send it to you. And of course, that would be not this year's M three, but next year's M three.
Yes.
So it's three percent more than this year's. Okay, on page three, if you go down about two thirds of the way, there's a line item entitled occupational therapist salary. That, as you can see, is up over seven thousand dollars. That is an actual cost because historically we have had either relatively inexperienced occupational therapists or certified occupational therapist assistants. And then we paid out of the another line item, the occupational therapist who supervised the assistant. We currently have onboard an occupational therapist with extensive experience, so it's obviously more expensive. So I took that into consideration. The custodial department's salary item is at three percent like all the other salary items because that's what the non-union salary increases. Okay, on page four, uh, five, excuse me. If you would go down to the large numbers, the special education tuition to private schools, that's an actual number from this year. The reason I didn't increase it three percent and the and the reason I didn't increase it an enormous amount is because I believe some of our costs will end this year, but it's too early in the process for me to know which ones will end and which ones won't. It's also too early in the process for me to know education out of district costs we may be picking up due IEP meetings this year. So it's really too early. So I put down the six ninety nine, six ninety because that's an actual number of what we're paying this year. Please note, that's over two hundred thousand dollars worth over this year's current budget. As I predicted to you in the spring, it was gonna happen. It has happened. Once again, I wanna frame that for you and our visitors. I have absolutely no control nor you of special education costs. The IEP meeting determines the cost based on the services that the I E P team determines are appropriate to give a free and appropriate public education to those students.
Lenny, I'm not following. Why? How do we know? And why is there a two hundred thousand dollar increase in two years? Is it because? Like, yeah, I, how do we know that?
How do I know that? Six hundred ninety nine thousand, six hundred ninety dollars represents all of the out-of-district tuitions that this circle this will pay if nothing changes between now and June thirtieth, two thousand.
Okay, and what, why is it going up so much?
Number of.
Circumstances.
A number of students whose IEP meetings have determined that they need out-of-district placement. The my first years here, we had reduced the number of out-of-district placements. And if you notice from two thousand twenty two through two thousand twenty four, the number was basically flat.
That's what I'm noticing.
And this year there are idiosyncratic and unique circumstances that the I E P team had to take into consideration, obviously which are confidential, that exploded the cost of out-of-district placements.
But it isn't gonna hit us until next year, so I'm hitting it.
It's 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 here.
It's here. That's what I guess.
That's this year's number. We were, we're over budget.
But we're.
Okay, I know what you're saying.
We're in F Y twenty four, it's four.
I under I understand what you're saying. You're absolutely right. What I didn't say, which I probably should have, is that we are over expended for the current year on that line two hundred and twenty five thousand dollars.
So this is what.
So this, which number is there?
Which number?
Number you.
Page five.
Four thousand. And that's not a lot different than now.
This is, this is what we actually are approved of. This is the six ninety nine, six ninety is what we're actually spending currently. But even though we don't own the group.
Okay, so I was looking at a P and L.
Correct.
Okay, alright.
What's missing here is actual.
Yeah, okay, alright, yeah, that's mine.
Yeah, the act the actual Madam Chair is six ninety nine, six ninety. That's the actual fiscal year twenty four.
Okay, that's what I was missing. I'm sorry if you said that.
And remember, um, you, Miss Hader, when you hit a regular button, that's deceptive because you look at it, you say, oh, it's gonna go up next year. Now, it already went up.
Yeah.
I just haven't budgeted because at the time I built the budget in January, in February, we had at least students who were not in out-of-district when the budget was approved by the school committee,
But.
who by the middle of March two thousand twenty three, we were spending somewhere between three hundred and six hundred and fifty dollars per day for their education because of their unique circumstances. Now, what's not shown on this line item now are two very important things, three. Possible that some of those students may not have those costs starting July first, two thousand twenty two, June thirtieth, two thousand twenty five. I don't know that yet. Because the I E P meetings haven't paid. Likewise, I don't know if we're going to get new students who require an out-of-district placement, and I don't know of them yet. So that's one factor. Factor two, uh, I don't know what the circuit breaker will be, which is the high cost reimbursement.
Yeah.
Um, that will reduce this number somewhat into neighborhood of fifty to sixty thousand, I'd say.
But you're being conservative right now because none of that is guaranteed.
Pardon me?
You're being conservative right now because none of it is guaranteed. That makes sense, yeah.
I know what it costs. I don't know how I can offset it.
Yeah.
The other thing that I've already talked to the individual who does our spec- special education filing, since this year's number is so dramatically higher than last year's number, we will qualify for something called extraordinary relief. Extraordinary relief is a state relief system that recognizes just what happened to us. That one student who is in a placement that is six hundred plus dollars a day can take a small district's sped budget and destroy it. So around March, we will file for extraordinary relief. I don't know, two things. Number one, the amount of money in the extraordinary relief fund is all based on surplus non-spent state funds. So I don't know how much the fund's gonna be. Two, I don't know what the percentage of their re- of their extraordinary relief is gonna be because they don't know how much money is. So it could be as small as twenty five thousand dollars. It could be as large as a, you know, as a six-digit number. But I expect that we'll be, we will, well, I know because I I did a preliminary filing, I know we will be eligible for some extraordinary relief. So between the circuit breaker and the extraordinary relief, that number will come down. The unknown factor, just as it is every year, is unknown out-of-district services that are going to be required for the two thousand twenty four, two thousand twenty five school year that I I don't even know the students at this time. Could be a two-and-a-half-year-old. I just don't know. So the conservative way to do this is the way I did. This is what we're spending. I know there's a couple of very high-cost students in there of high school age that may be graduating or aging out. Uh, and so that's a number I'm comfortable with. It it to me, it feels better than a guest. Because it's a concrete number. Um, the other item is special education transportation, which I increased at about eight-and-a-half percent uh, because I did the actual numbers this year and we're a little tiny bit under budget. Uh, over budget there, excuse me. So I knew I would need more money there. In the public school transportation budget on page six, I want you to be aware that you approved me paying for additional late buses from the Huey Bus Company. So the two thousand twenty four budget for public school regular education transportation should have been flat because it's the first of two years in the extension, which there's no increase, but I added the additional cost for those late buses. Okay, that was the two thousand four hundred twenty four dollars, I think, away. Right? So the bottom line at this point is an eleven point zero three percent increase in the budget. That represents everything I can project, predict, or know. So it's the additional teacher for sixth grade. It's the out-of-district cost, it's the sped transportation, the three percent con- contract increases for our two of unit A and B and T A. Uh, three percent for non-union employees and then a four percent increase in material supplies and services.
So that eleven point zero three percent translates to about half a million dollars.
Uh, yes, if you look on the it's five hundred and fifty two thousand and about five hundred and fifty three thousand, yeah.
And so if we were to add a grade K teacher, the only incremental cost salary.
To our budget, the town has an incremental cost for better than chess.
And you know, I know many other people here tonight are looking at information about potentially sending children over to response program this year for our contract with Swan Scott, if we were into that, each child we would have a whole cost.
No, it's it's a little over sixteen thousand.
It's almost seventeen thousand.
So that. So if we did do that.
Excuse me, what were you saying, Swam Scott?
Like not for, I'm wondering if that's already been us sending the sixth grade.
Tell you in a sec.
The sixth grade class that's currently there now, I thought was included, but that was. You know, that was back for budget for last year. We, we had Mr. Contract.
I'll I'll double check it. It's a great question. I did it. I did this about ten, twelve days ago. I believe it's included.
I sent it to an email, I believe, about it, that it was included because you you're not moving it down.
If you're in, um, but let me check that.
Yeah. But if we add that with the current enrollment.
I think it's in there.
And then did a max. Yeah, so just to confirm, we currently have seven children, correct, in in grade five? Yes, and it's anticipated that an eighth will be coming back to join the class in sixth grade. One student is away from the year.
That's correct.
It'll be anticipated coming back.
Okay.
So it should, will be eight as of now.
And how many are in, are we going into?
Well, you might as well. Yeah, I think, you know, it's part of the budget.
Yes.
We we need it cleared tonight.
Thank you.
Yeah, this was. Think of it to talk about the budget and then, you know, the difference between grade teacher and, you know, sending the children over to Swan Scott. Conversation that we need to have in this.
Yep, great. And there are, there are five that are in the sixth grade from the month, um, right now.
Yeah. So last year, we lost an enrollment, but we also gained an enrollment, so we're even now. So we still have five.
And right now, we have a fifth grade, but that's eight students.
Or seven. So that means.
Seven currently, one coming back.
Coming back. So if we were looking at that like sixteen number, which I think is at sixteen, seven, then.
Yeah, it's almost sixteen nine.
For each student of a hundred and thirty-four.
Yeah, Ma- Madam Chair, global map.
Yeah.
It would be about seventy five thousand dollars more than this budget.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But that's artificially inflated because the payments would be
Spread.
Spread out over
Life remaining.
Nine payments just like this year's are spread out over twelve. So even though I'm talking as if it's gonna be in next year's budget, I wouldn't be adding it into next year's budget. I would only be adding approximately forty thousand dollars.
And then also.
No, excuse me, that's wrong. I would be adding, I apologize. I took the whole number, not the net. Um, it's seventy-two divided by three, so approximately twenty-seven thousand-ish.
And then that would still require us to hire another teacher for the following year, so it would be another clock on top of that. You know, where we're still in contract with Swan Scott for our seventh through twelfth graders. We are in our third year.
Currently, um, second.
Currently in second.
Then would be sort of.
Then would be, then we would have a third year.
No, I apologize, current, yeah, currently second.
Yeah, I think that's.
The next year would be third year.
Yes.
And so essentially, we would need to follow two years of sixth grade teacher and still have a salary for that. On top of this, if it was decided that.
Yes. The, uh, the the school year twenty-four, twenty-five next year would be the last year of small classes that the school committee, based on what you have said before, would consider not having the sixth grade remain here. So if you didn't hire a sixth grade teacher for twenty-four, twenty-five, you would, and pay Swam Scott, you would then have, definitely have the cost of a teacher for twenty-five, twenty-six.
Yeah.
Plus, you would be paying Swam Scott for the next nine payments for this year's fifth grade and nine payments for this year's sixth grade.
Yeah, great, yep. Okay.
I'll put it, if you would like, I'll lay that all out
That would be great.
in concrete for you. Yeah, the the payments are this, the fact that we pay it over time the is this, it deceives one to think it's less of an impact than it really is.
Yes, that is true. You really have to keep it to account that you're justifying.
That's right. You know, it's not like you just write a seventy-five thousand dollar check, but you know, it's kind of like your mortgage. I mean, it's there every month. It's there. For every payment we make to Swam Scott, there's gonna be, now there's an additional six thousand plus dollars. If we, if you do the sixth, the current fifth grade, then there would be a, an additional, uh, it's gonna be a larger number. It'll be, let's say, eight thousand on top of the six, so it's fourteen.
And then also, you know, that's the minimum amount of enrollments, you know, based upon what we have this year. And so I think, you know, what we had discussed the last time too, was that they decide they 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 rejected our offer for guardrails and you know, I think when we were looking at this class, it was twelve students total. That was the potential for enrollment.
That's correct. Yeah, the only guardrail we have, and it's not really a guardrail, it's really a a freeze in escalation, is that on October first every year, the number on October first is the number. So if two students go move into the, if twins sixth graders move into the community right now and go to Swan Scott Middle School, we don't have any charge for them until next year's payments. Likewise, if two students move
Yeah.
tomorrow, we don't get any reduction till next year.
Right.
So, you know, it works both ways. So Madam Chair, that's, uh, the news on my first draft of the budget.
No. Nice job.
And I I must say, I'm sorry.
No, no, it's it's not a shocker at least. It's not at the cost of everything. Sky high. Okay, so we've set it to seven C.
Yes.
Seven C is the long-range planning update.
Madam Chair, I apologize. I don't have anything that I can bring to you to lead you towards a different place than we were ever at at the last meeting in terms of the blended learning model. Uh, what we presented to you last time is moving forward. Uh, the same kinds of curricular, co-curricular, and extracurricular activities that are combining grades or still combining them. I can report affirmatively that all of the activities that have been combining students into multi-age groups have been going very, very well. If you think about the past reports from both parents and staff and administration, that was not the case. You know, we had difficulty with combining grades. This year, it has been extremely smooth and, um, and worthwhile.
And so to review our timeline, uh, we discussed that on December twelfth will still be discussion, discussing, um, or making a decision on the rising sixth grade class. And then the decision to Swan Scott, we'll have a final decision if we don't come to a decision on the summer twelfth at the January ninth meeting, so that we have a deadline with Swan Scott to inform them of our attention
By end of January.
By the end of January. Our. Our. Long range plan. Overall for the fifth grade class. Generally speaking, we decided. Will be deferred, it will be deferred. This is not the time to be talking about making significant changes to the school. Our our focus needs to be on. Finding a new superintendent. And so the timeline for the new superintendent and, you know, if um, I know you you've made a lot of requests. I I I am a little slower than I'd like. I'll give you guys enough to later on, um, but yes. Um, so we have scheduled timelines for interviews with the superintendent, uh, potential. Um, candidates. All the way through um, March twenty sixth and then a final vote. On the new superintendent people night.
Um, the only thing I just wanna add to that, uh, is just for the sake of process. I think that's the right word. We when we made the very difficult decision about sending the students over to Swan Scott, sixth grader was Swan Scott last year. The primary motivator was the what's gonna be best for a class that was so small. Um, and uh. And so we we did, we did open up the door of a lot of conversation that's motivating. About whether it was a win inside of that, um, for students developmentally being sixth grade. If there, you know, a win there about being a swan Scott, but the that was secondary. To the main motivator of the conversation, which is about size, right, size of the class. And not having an effect on children of that age, right, um, so. When we think about long term, one of the things that we wanted to do was look at the numbers and a projection of the numbers at Johnson. And right now, as we project not for the current fifth graders. But if we look at pre K to four right now, those numbers all look strong. There is not, I think there may be one class that's like sixteen. But um, as I recall, I know like, was that right? But they, none of the classes look like the sixth grade that's currently at Swan Scott from us.
Current.
Um, look, so I just wanted to say that out loud in public meeting. Because that is a change, right? And we did do that work and look at those numbers and have a conversation about those numbers. So now the primary reason that we had last year is no longer, it does bear on this conversation about the current fifth graders going to sixth grade. But it does not bear, as we can, knowing what we know right now about the numbers of pre K to to the fourth grade, it does not bear. That falls apart, right? That's not something, you know, that we would consider. So then it would be, do we have such a strong appetite for the secondary question that was never answered? About whether it's, you know, good, bad, or it's awesome. Um, you know, and whether there's enough appetite in the community. To push us to look at that. Right now, I have not, I personally. Um, have not heard an appetite for that in the community, an appetite to look at this again for a long-term change for a month. I have not heard that. Um, so I just wanted to say that out loud because I don't want. I don't want folks in the community, there is, there are some people that do have feelings about this. Um, and have expressed those informally, right, to me, and so, um. Uh, and usually along the lines of, um. Wanting to keep things as as they are, right, with the sixth grade here. Um, and so I don't want people worrying that we're just gonna pick this up. So we're just trying to just take us through, you know, how we got here, just a reminder what we propose. And that that primary, with the exception of this year, that primary isn't there.
Thank you, Beth. I think that's a very important point. So with that said, I think I'm gonna open it up to um, community correspondence and input, so for anyone that would like to speak, we'd love to hear. From you, if you could just please state your name and your address.
Hi, I'd like to speak if I could. Okay, Debbie Uskati, uh, twenty fifth Spring Road. Um, so thanks for the discussion. Um, I'm the parent of a current fifth grader, um, so I just wanted to express my. Desire um, for the sixth grade class next year to go to Swan Scott Middle School. I think it would be a better experience for them. Um, my daughter is there now in seventh grade. She's having a great year. She loves it. She has a lot of diverse opportunities and extra curricular activities. Um, so I think it would be beneficial to the current fifth graders to move there next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Don't be shy. One once.
Go on twice.
Alrighty. Closed. So what I would like to hear is. I would love to get Mrs. Kovis's. Feedback in regards to Tony, how things are working out. In grade five. What she sees as the pros and cons of having a small class size for a second year.
Yeah.
That would be really.
Well, wasn't it, would it be a second year, right, because?
It would be if the if the children were.
Yes.
Oh, oh, maybe for the future.
Yes, for the future, yes.
I'm thinking of last year's that she had.
Oh.
If that would be that this.
No, no, I'm having to talk about her.
I just have to, you mean, so far this year hasn't gone, you know, how would it be maybe and and her next year, we'll see.
Yeah. Yeah, especially where she's taught grade six.
And where she's teaching grade five.
Got it.
All sorts of things. We had a long conversation that I, you know, remember coming to us, I mean, to our studios downstairs. About, um, that is maybe about how to get some input from kids that are over in sixth grade right now, um, and. And your parents, right, uh, without. Uh.
Identifying.
Right, making sure that, yeah, were, and I think where we ended is asking Tony for you to get some themes, like talking to Mr. Kalashman. And seeing if like, like if most of them, um, you know, which I know would be four. If there were, if there were things they all say that are good or bad, right, about the experience of moving over. Um, both them and their parents, if they're willing, that would be. I think helpful to secure their experience.
For them to tell him about their experience? I don't know how honest they would be about that, like I. Is that what I'm understanding is that?
I guess I was.
Jay, Mr. Kalashman, because obviously Tony wouldn't approach the kids, so, cause I just feel like we sort of discussed how it wouldn't really.
If it were be, if it like, you know, and I I.
Cause I agree with you, I think you should input it.
Yeah, I I would put them, I I guess I would invite any of you to do it one or two, like have them do an anonymous survey, so you don't know one kid from another.
Yeah.
And you do your best to say to the kids. If you could say something that identifies you. Try not to, right, and you, we just do the best we can, and then if we see identifiers or Tony does, like he could take them out. So I'm looking for themes, right, I'm really like, if all five kids are like. So so like, you know, just to go to the parents' point, like so many activities, so full.
Yeah, so it's emotional.
Um, really, right?
Yeah.
And if they're like, I, it feels too early. I wish I could have stayed another year, I've been in the hunt, I wish, you know.
Yeah.
I I'm not ready to be here, you know, I I wanna be back there. Um, or I miss my friends, like, you know, whatever it is, like I wanna he, you wanna hear that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, from the kids, and I'd like to hear it from the parents too, if they're willing, right?
Oh, yeah.
Be willing, I I think that would be, that certainly can't be the only driver, but I think it would be helpful.
Yeah, um, I think so, it it would be, I just don't know how easily we would take that. Especially with such a small.
Well, um, madam chair, we we share. Since the last time we spoke about this, we now share the Parent Square platform. And I'm wondering if we could do something through that. That would be probably more parent guardian related than student. I'm not sure how to do this, but but certainly Kevin and Jason can discuss that. To what they're both comfortable with.
Okay. And again, like the students don't, uh, can decide or not decide their own confidentiality. As educators, you know how to clean, clean up and identifiers, so. I would trust, you know, you to eventually do that, um, and the parents would have to give permission to, for us to do that, obviously. But.
There can be a statement at the top, please don't uh. Use utilize any names or identifying information to, you know, answer. Uh, we get those all the time.
And and I think we could, in my, I mean, maybe I'm off here, but like, in my opinion, I I would say like, you know, our school committee is really looking for input. For your family's experience on. Like how, I mean, obviously it's November, so it has to be much time, but like so far, how has it gone? You know, we we are trying to be thoughtful and purposeful and. We really wanna hear from you about sort of the themes around how it's going so far, like I feel like. Having the notes from us, I don't know if that will make a difference, but it's sort of like helping us drive in another way, right, to come to our decision. Um, so I don't know, that's just my opinion, is that I feel like it's not just because we're doing it to be random, like we want, we would love to know what the family's. Sort of experiences so far.
But I also wanna caution it with, you know, there's a lot of things that we have to consider.
Right.
You know, for this decision, including budget, and I know it's a popular. Um, concept, but it is a consideration, very strong words. And I don't want families to think that because we decide one way or another that their. Thoughtfulness and sharing their information with us wasn't. Thought through, but you know, there's. A lot more than. You know, unfortunately, what they what they want, what they're wanting, their experience is hard because, you know, our education is actually very good and. You know, while not ideal, a smaller class size, I think the school has done a great job and given extracurricular activities and opportunities for students to engage with each other. And as a small school, you know, and to continue to be successful, we have to continue this practice so that, you know. With this amount of students in first, second, third, fourth, all the way throughout their time, it could happen. Right, you know, and so while I appreciate everybody's comments, you know, it's not that. I wouldn't be in the same seat as you as a parent. But in the school committee member.
Yeah, I think it's also tricky because it's like if we ask for their input. I I mean, or I, we're not gonna feel comfortable sharing, like if two people write back. You know, I mean, sure, that's two people out of five, but. I my point is like, I don't know that that's something we'll be able to discuss in detail here. I just think it's information for us to absorb.
Let me do it this way, the school committee, I really hear that, shut up. Um, and I think we have to be very careful about how we ask and how we explain and be transparent. Um, about this data, so we are trying to make an important decision. Um, this year about what the best course of action is for the current uh, fifth grade. And in making that decision, every decisions are made better when you have data going into. There are a lot of data points that we are gonna consider. I'm gonna name with you right now, the budget. Um, the experience of the current students from the hunt that are in sixth grade in Swan Scott. And their parents. Um, the community's input that can happen right here in our next meetings. Um, I would invite the other parents, um, that are at current fifth graders, like, um, uh. I think it's Debbie, um, just spoke. It would be great to hear their voices in here and what they would um, want, right? That's when only one parent speaks, you don't know what everybody else says, so I would say, um, if you have opinions about this, please share them. Um, and uh, what the teachers are saying, what Miss Kovis comes back with, that we just asked, this is another data point.
Yeah.
No one of these data points, data points. Um, cancels out the other ones. We are gonna take them all because of the confidentiality inherent to small groups. We are gonna treat that with care, so I don't anticipate us sharing every single thing, every conversation, what Miss Kovis said, all of this. We do not need to share that, but we do need to share is who are we listening to, where did we gather data? And um, and what are the deciding factors in our decision?
Yeah.
And then we will make the best decision that we can possibly make in partnership with this administration for these seventeen children. Um, so I, that's how I kind of look at it, so I don't wanna exclude those data points, I also don't wanna like. You having twenty seven thousand data points, but like those are important voices, tea of parents and kids, teachers, budget, those seem to be the drivers, where do we use them? Think of what we can.
Madam Chair, may I respectfully add academics?
Yeah, that's the very goal, yes.
The academics is.
And we do have some standardized data. From the middle school, uh, Swan Scott that we can compare to our standardized data as compared to uh, student growth. And um. Test scores.
Yeah, no, absolutely, academic performance is very important.
And that's really the only concrete data we have, you know, grades in the class are.
Yeah.
You know. Less reliable. But we do have um, standardized test scores that we can. Again, globalize to protect because we have small numbers, you know, globalized. Into, uh, you know, the SGP, the student growth percentiles and the average scores.
So realistically speaking, could we add the all of these data points in time for our next meeting in December? That way we can continue to have the conversation. We know that we have to have a decision, no later than our meeting early January, if not, make it in December.
Right, like if we're not gonna get more data.
Exactly.
The next meeting, I mean, let's not drag this on.
Right.
I mean. We'll have budget, Tony can do sort of an academic assessment, um, with Kevin. Um, and uh, I think we just invited parents, right, to come here and then what, especially the parents of the graders right now, we've done that. Um, and I think it's the the question mark is could we call those voices, probably you'll be able to have a conversation with Kovis, but. Um, calling the voices of the um, the folks that are in the little school in Swan Scott right now.
Students, the six students.
And the parents, yeah.
The parents.
Yeah. That would be like, that would probably.
I think it's five students.
Five, five.
Yeah. Five.
Right, oh, right.
Like you. The other everybody can say. Are this year's sixth, uh, fifth graders.
Right, I was thinking the same thing.
Yep, like.
How are they doing?
It would be anything.
Right, you know, like.
I actually just wrote them down, I couldn't remember one of them, but I wrote down six of the names that I could remember.
I would agree. Yep.
Um, and uh, just to look at them, just to have a screen.
They're gonna be the easiest group to get data from.
I think so, yeah. So I think, I mean, if if my school system, what I would do is sit down and have a book with them, and so, um, and I have enough. Well, when I was, you know, in the school, I have enough relationships to do that, so I did, Kevin, you could sit with the current. Fifth grader, you know, and have a little lunch bunch with them, you know, especially lunch bunch, and get their input. Again, share it here without identifiers.
Yeah, it's a good point. Cause I don't know how they feel. I just wonder, yeah, I mean, I, yeah, I mean, I don't know if they would feel like they were on the spot, or maybe they wouldn't feel like they can be, be honest again, I think it's tr- I think it's tricky.
They, I I was gonna start honored when you asked that, I really do.
Yeah.
We can.
If you have relationship, yeah, you know.
I I do agree.
We could also use Parent Square with our fifth grade parents.
Right, exactly, that's a great idea, yeah.
And ask ask the same questions we're asking for sixth grade.
Right. I mean, these were some of the things also.
That's a very, we should do that.
Yeah, a year ago. We were called on the carpet a little bit for not doing some of these things, so let's do.
Right, and try, right.
And madam chair, I could let. A specific, um, again, using Parent Square since we have it and it's convenient and. People um, seem to like it a lot, invite, specifically invite, uh, the fifth and sixth grade. Parents from the hunt to your next school committee meeting. Parents from the HAN to your next school committee meeting.
Yes.
To give input, I mean, not just post, but specifically invite them.
That'd be great. Yes, absolutely.
And if you would like to write a brief invitation, we'd be happy to distribute it for you.
Thank you, yes.
Putting it in mind.
I love that.
To those.
Yeah.
Okay.
And if I could be so bold, Kevin, if we could. Create the survey. Link it to the invitations to the meeting. Multiple birds with a stone, then anyone who couldn't come to the meeting could do the survey and somebody could do both.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. That's great.
That would enhance our feedback, I believe.
Love it.
The only piece I don't know is how. The parents of our current sixth graders at the middle school get their survey results directly to you. I I I'm sure you can figure it out with Jason.
Directly.
Or with the IT uh person who helped us.
Yeah. Through Parent Square, I I I can make a a group that would be, and I should probably have this annually is a group of Nahat alumni.
Yeah, yeah.
On Parent Square.
That, you know, it's so small, it's small enough that you you could just identify.
Yeah. Yeah.
By number.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I can also use it all.
That way, that way, that way we'll get the fifth and sixth grade. We ask a question in the survey, is your child a fifth grader or a sixth grader? And then you'll have all the data coming into one place and one way. And um, does it, does Parent Square collected for you, like?
Trying to see, oh, the, you would use um.
Like a survey.
A Google survey, but but send it to Parent Square.
Yeah.
And that would, that would uh.
Yeah.
Do it.
Do the math, it would do, it would do pie charts.
Yeah, it would consolidate the info.
That's right. So then the answer is, well, yes, we could have a lot of things for you for your next meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
We'll do.
Thank you.
I'm gonna fast track it, and we do have a little bit longer than typical.
Right. Great, that'd be perfect, thank you. Okay, so now we can move on to the examination and authorization.
Thank you, Madam Chair, um. Uh, in your packet, you have a three-page um document that is the. Um, the role for this meeting. The total is one hundred and forty-one thousand, three hundred and eighty-six dollars and sixty-one cents. Uh, as has become my habit, I'm gonna go through it very quickly. Stop and Chomp is obviously lunch and snack foods, um. But the next two are um. Electronics as is light back. That's something for the nurses office, while Hill is education, Kyle Swanscott is special education placements as it's Easter steal. Um. The Pro Bag Systems is a bill for nineteen hundred and seventeen dollars, which I can't bring back. The next, I will, the next two are, the next three are individuals who either have done services for us. Or in some way, um, we owe money to for transportation. Um. Amazon speaks for itself, it's, we get a lot of things from Amazon, National Grid. I did notice that our electric bill is finally dr- dropping a little bit, which is good. Uh, Landmark School is an out of district placement. Um, Verizon is phones, instant alarm is uh. Phone costs of for both uh our alarm, we have a intrusion alarm now. And um. The next group of individuals is once again services that have been provided for us, Sneak Time Pizza is for the. Cost of lunches and as a reminder, I want to remind you that one hundred percent of our students. Are being fed this year uh pre-lunch, um. Care of the governor and the legislature, this is not the federal, but this is uh. This is the state, uh because the surplus don't know how long that's gonna last. North Shore Educational Consortium is special education programming. Um. Home Depot was something that our custodians purchased, extermination speech for itself, Neil is general education, transportation. J R I is a uh student. Out of district placement, I wanted to draw your attention to the figures. That's one month.
How many kids?
One, each of them is one month. And that's a twelve-month program. There is the gap that Ms. Anderson saw between the budget and. The expenditures, that's almost exactly what it is. So Madam Chair, with your. Support, I would like to respectfully ask a member of the school committee. To uh make a motion to approve. One hundred forty-one thousand. Three hundred eighty-six dollars and sixty-one cents.
I'll make the motion to approve the invoices for today's meeting, eleven fourteen twenty-three, in the amount of one forty-one thousand, three hundred and eighty-six dollars and sixty-one cents.
I'm sorry, did the motion uh favor?
All right.
Bye.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
The embarrassment is the uh, oh, in a way, you remember. This was an installation, the nineteen hundred seventy dollars by Pro AV Systems was the ins- the installation of a um. Overhead projector. The new kind that's very close to the uh board and of our across the hallway in two oh nine. Uh, which we had never purchased. I chuckled because um it was in service for less than a week before it was damaged.
Oh, I know.
Um.
An hour.
An hour.
What you guys doing?
We didn't do anything, but um it will be repaired for uh. Let, a lot less money than the the purchase and installation was. And and I apologize for laughing, I just found that, if I didn't laugh, I would have gotten upset.
You didn't laugh earlier, I'll tell you that.
Fun to be superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair, um. Couple of things, number one is the security and safety update. And I have a detailed one to give you today because I'm just about at the end of all of the preliminary work. So we have the window security film going in on the bottom floor and all the glass entries, that's twelve thousand, seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars. The parking lot fencing and bollards are obviously complete, that was eight thousand, seventy-five dollars. The purchase uh. Plus the thirty-one hundred and fifty dollars for the bollards. So the total was uh eleven to twenty-five. A new transaction window next to um. Ms. April's desk, which will be made out of three eighths inch. Uh, panel glass like you would see in a very large storefront window, you know, like a um. The eight foot by ten foot windows, the glass is really strong, very much like our windshields. Then we will put the film over that too, it will have a small hole encapsulated by two metal uh rings to speak through. Uh, our upgrade for our video system is ten thousand five dollars and that I signed, I uh signed the uh. Approval and contract for that today. Uh, and then what's not yet set is um improving our. Outdoor lock systems by installing two new uh automatic door closures and locks. And then um altering the way the keyed entries on the outside of our schoolwork. Um, to. Automatically re-lock when you pull the key out. So right now, if you think about how your door, the door works in your house. It uh. You know, deadbolt, if you open it. You have to lock it again. I'm setting up all the outside locks to when someone puts a key in, opens it, goes in, picks the key out, it automatically re-locks. No one has to remember how to re-lock. Uh, I have also bought uh some um magnetic covers for our door latch. Latches so that all of our doors will be um. Always locked. But won't actually latch. And uh, this is something that one of our staff members brought to me. So for example, this door has the system installed in. This is a magnetic cover. That goes over the latch. This door is locked. All day long it'll be used, if there's an emergency, just pull the magnetic cover off and go, much easier than finding that key. Going around into the hallway, so we're talking about speed. And they're already installed, almost everywhere in the school, I I handed them out today and we'll check them tomorrow. Uh. And that will take most of the fifty thousand dollars that we have.
Thank you so much.
Very well. Um, Madam Chair, for the information, I will refer to our principal.
Of course, a lot going on.
Thank you, Madam Chair, there's a lot going on, a lot going on here as well, so recognizing that, I will go through the. Events as I'm sure you've seen them in the newsletter and so forth. Uh, we had a wonderful Veterans Day assembly, congratulations to students in grades three, four, and five, as well as their teachers and their music teacher. Uh, and our teacher for putting this together, as well as Heidi Fiori for decorating, uh lovely ceremony. Uh, we had a nice turnout, we had a new veteran that joined us and uh she was wonderful to meet, just out of Iraq. Uh, with experience in uh radio repair. Um, I put her on the spot, I said, you're fantastic, you gotta take the microphone for a few minutes. And so she shared a bit about her career and um and just what it's like to, you know, be a Marine and be an act of service. So that was, that was interesting, as well as um the folks that we're familiar with um that are decorated veterans. We had our annual Halloween parade, went off without a hitch with lots of wonderful costumes, the older students and the younger students all enjoy seeing it as the parents. Um, I was able to put together uh on Ms. Tarmy's invitation. Uh, a field trip to the Historical Society to see the Norman LeLiberate exhibit before closed, it's now closed, I, oh, it's open for five more days. Um, so if you haven't seen it yet, get down there, it's wonderful, our student work is downstairs, uh the students walk down. And um and had a great visit and got to see their own work and also learn about uh Nahat artists. So thanks to the Historical Society for having us and putting on uh that great exhibit. Uh, third grade had their annual field trip to Plymouth. They, we're, I'm working with the school to determine how we'll do field trips going forward, next year we'll have seventeen third graders. And so we're thinking that we'll do this every other year so that everyone has the experience, but we're not using a whole bus. To move seventeen kids down to Plymouth for a day. Um, they'll all have a field trip, maybe one year they go to South Side Works and the next year they go to Plantation. I met with the PTO tonight before your meeting to talk about this and just to get the most bang to the buck. And also think about staffing and things like that. Um, and so I think it's gonna be great, you know, most schools, they'll put three third grades on a bus. And that makes sense, but for us, we gotta do it a little different, mixed grade levels.
Yeah.
Uh, and so, and also by making it traditions, then I think we can make it work well. So that nobody misses out, but again, we make, we make the most use of uh the generous PTO funds that's afforded, so thanks to the PTO for coming out and supporting them. I was able to talk to the uh town administrator, Mr. Tony Barletta, about the walking Viking trail that I I put before for um CCC. Uh, the conservation funding that is available, and as you know, we were, uh, I, we were awarded over twenty thousand dollars to put a trail in. From the Heritage Trail over to here, um but then I learned that the town was also looking about moving some things around. Um, and that it might disrupt, it might be disrupted in the meantime. And so I met with um Mr. Barletta and he's, he's really in support of this trail. Um, but he's also looking at moving a soccer field and a baseball field. Not the baseball field that we currently have, but an old baseball field that is next to our baseball field, a little league field, he wants a soccer field over there. Um, and so, you know, all these things should be coordinated. And I thought that was a great idea, I'm glad that he's in support of the trail. Uh, I think it's gonna get kids away from D P W with the fire department, I just saw more students going through the fire station's driveway recently and. It's a natural because there's a diagonal cut, and if they had a nice trail in the grass, I think dog walkers and kids alike would love it. So um, so that that's still in in play, um.
What is the timeline for that now?
So now.
Sorry.
Oh, so he he'll probably put together a pro- a proposition for this this season for um CCC, what was it, um. Conservation Division, CPC, thank you, CPC funding, so he'll likely put together a CPC funding request now. Uh, and that'll go before town meeting. Um, and then it would happen, I'd imagine, probably in, probably fall or spring of um the next full year.
So next fall, we'll start building the trail?
Right, if, you know, if the town funds it with the soccer fields.
Okay.
We're gonna put it, we're gonna put it together as a, as a combined project.
Okay. Right.
It's, I'm looking to follow the Heritage Trail that's already there. And I don't think it's gonna interfere too much with the things he's looking to move.
Yeah. Okay.
But I do think it makes sense to do it in concert.
I do too, it's just, it's been, you know, we've had, this conversation's been going on for years.
Yeah.
So it's like, let's, I don't care, let's just get.
Let's start riding the bikes to the grass already, I know.
Oh, definitely.
Yeah.
Um.
I'm with you on that.
Yeah, I'm sure, and so if we're gonna. Move, like, let's figure out who decides moving the soccer field and move it, and let's talk to the Nahat soccer.
Yeah.
So then. Um, so that we know what we're doing for the spring and the fall, right, because we have soccer two seasons a year.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
Um, and you know, Matt probably doesn't know this, and so, um, yeah, I just think that there's a lot of, you know.
You, you know, if if you, if you'd like to bring it up with him, you know, of course, as a resident, more than welcome. Um, I know that.
I'm also a assistant soccer coach.
Fantastic, fantastic.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Assistant soccer coach.
That is definitely the question my family. Um, but um, yeah, I'll mention it too.
But again, he has had a focus on, you know, basketball, tennis, different areas to work on, so I I bet it's, I bet it's gonna happen soon because it seems like.
Okay.
Areas have been improved quickly, all right, from what I've noticed. Um, K N one had a nice uh community building project on November first last week, we're gonna continue that this week. We're putting a micro forest at the front of the school, uh front side of the school to. Reduce mowing area, increase oxygen absor- uh increase on CO2 absorption. Uh, we had about sixty plants, the donation value is probably over six hundred dollars. All those willow trees were sixty dollars a piece, they can see in that, in that line. And so Diana Brain is a phenomenal uh resource for us. And so I know I have a lot of people coming out tomorrow afternoon uh to do that with their children after school. Thursday, we have a bully prevention uh workshop, uh and Jake is gonna be introducing uh. The gentleman from M P Y, Corey Mashburn.
Mashburn.
Uh, and so he'll be uh introducing him and we'll have a wonderful uh talk from him, I think it'll enjoy working with him, it's a timely project. You see the dates for parent teaching conferences, we're using Parent Square for signups, signup genius is um in the past for us. It's hard to create and it has a lot of ads. Uh, and this is nice because it's all in one place and it makes parents sign up for Parent Square. So if you wanna get on, if you wanna get a sign up through that, you have to read. So if you wanna get on, if you wanna get a sign up to that, you have to register. Uh, which is a simple process and your email's already in there, so it's, you can sign up to Google. You don't have to make another password or anything. I've been uh promoting the dates for our winter concert and our two winter concerts. Those have been in the newsletter so that parents. Uh, know that well in advance. We're also looking for folks to dress semi-formally. Um, shoes excluded. Any shoes you wanna wear, but wear some dark pants and a, a white shirt is what we're looking for, or a dress. So we're kinda dressing it up and getting back to town hall.
Oh, yeah.
It's great now.
And so the concert.
Oh, nice.
At town hall.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So we have one at town hall for the older kids. Mr. Bullock will be there with the band. Uh, and then. The daytime concert is K to two.
Oh, I see.
Um, and that's a school-wide because the school itself also likes to have some music at that time and. This is the Friday before our vacation and we didn't wanna put the K twos on this big uh stage. So I think that's more appropriate for that age. Everyone's welcome. For those.
Thank you.
Um, school brains, we got the report cards going up there. We already got the last year's report cards up there just as a practice run. Parents have been encouraged to get into the portal. Oh, thank you, Mr. Parentozzi. Mr. cameraman there. Um, the Parent Square rollout is going wonderfully, I believe. Um, as I said, parent teacher conferences are there. Um, we're investigating Parent Square payments. You'll be able to pay for field trips if we want to collect money for that through there. You'd be able to pay through pretty much anything that we have at school. There is a similar, there's a two point three percent. Fee uh as there is with other. Systems for using a credit card. Uh, I'm not sure if they take a check or not. Um, but we are looking into uh moving some of our payments to Parent Square. And voice call is working well. I don't know if you got a call from anybody yet, but when you do receive a call from a teacher from their cell phone through Parent Square. Tells you that you're gonna be recorded and tells the teacher that they're gonna be recorded and then the voice message is recorded. And then you talk. And if you have to go back to what was discussed, you can always do that and find it handy and they also transcribe it for you. So um, it's nice because then I don't have to also send an email and say, remember when we talked about this? Uh, it's all just kind of recorded right there. Now curriculum instruction, so that was my technology report. Under curriculum instruction. The pre-K to two focus has been on pre-literacy and literacy. Uh, determining what exactly pre-K, K one, and two students should know by the end of the school year. We had a wonderful meeting on November first amongst the staff about what it looks like at the end of each. School year, so they know that what they're getting and what the expectations are. We also talked about what curriculum tools we currently have to teach these topics. And maybe looking to add some in the coming school year. You know, I'll say we had a wonderful turnout for our Ruby Bridges walk school day today. Um, it was really nice. We had a lesson on Monday. I put together a slideshow over the weekend for teachers to share. Students made armbands that were similar to the armbands. That were worn by the uh US Marshals when they walked Ruby Bridges to school on November fourteenth nineteen sixty. Uh, so students picked a word equity, justice. Uh, equality, um, inclusion and put that on an armband. And the idea was they could wear that to school or at least just. Have a lesson about it and do, do a simple craft. Um, and we had Anthony from the item here today covering that. And he was also able to speak with one Ms. Anderson. About um how that went for her family and as a school committee number. So I'm glad that you were here supporting Ms. Anderson. I appreciate that.
Yeah, I've been a um, um, school cheerleader this week. I went to the uh, actually snuck into the Veterans Day. They have not yet, the Veterans Day celebration I did and um it was. Uh, the vet, I mean, I've seen a lot of great things here. The Veterans Day was like maybe the top. Top ever, top for, you know, two for me. Um, and. It was heartwarming. The students all took it seriously, like everyone took it so seriously. It was so respectful of the veterans that were in the crowd and the active, active service member that, that Ms. Anderson talked about. Um, I, I did get some footage, um, and uh, and so I just haven't had a chance to send out pictures. I did do. For use for the newsletter, but it was, it was heartwarming and I was so proud to, you know, sit in the seat and, and watch what they were able to pull off. Um, as a mom of an interracial family, I was telling Kevin this morning. It was wonderful that the school made the commitment to do. I think like if we did more history, like celebrating Ruby Bridges at all schools and not just like schools with a. High percentage of African-American high-ness kids, we would be a better country, you know, to do those sort of celebratory things that would make people feel better about. Um, writ large about what it means, like what the beauty of what it means to be an American citizen. So I was um. I, this is a great week for Johnson and then uh to be a parent Johnson. And I was just really, really proud and appreciate you bringing all of that to our um community.
Well, I appreciate your supporting.
And thank you, yeah, thank you.
Uh, next year, I know that we'll um, I'd really like to invite parents to the Veterans Day Assembly.
Yes, yes, yes.
In the past, we have and it hasn't been a traditional, we've had a lot of veterans. Uh, it's only been sixth grade, but now that we've expanded it and I had some last minute requests. I was a little hesitant to uh. Recognize those last minute requests because then you could very rarely have parents who said, I didn't have enough time to plan for it.
Yeah.
Uh, and so I said, let's keep it as it is.
Yeah.
But going forward, I think um the stu- the work the students put into it, the effect that it has on the community, I think we can all celebrate the veterans.
Yeah.
Um, not just the kids, um, celebrating them. So parents could come out and um and, and celebrate their, their work and their commitment. Uh, and then I also attached um our schedule for November first, uh, which was our. Professional Development Day. I was able to get a survey that asked parent, asked teachers how they felt about the workshops. Uh, I thought we got some nice feedback, some very positive feedback um about the workshop, even driven by the previous survey. And at the end of the survey, I had about ten choices about what you wanna see next. And so that we're really making sure that we're hearing the teachers and seeing what they need for professional development.
That, that uh schedule is labeled eight C.
Oh, okay.
It's varied between the ten thousand policies.
Yeah. So, uh, you, you hit it on us. Um, that's fine though. It was um, it wasn't what, it wasn't a really nice uh program. Some about writing, um, some just collaborative time. Uh, it was a busy day, but we also had time for parents, for teachers to um meet together and talk about their um, their curriculum. Um, and I just put the artifact in there for you to rewrite your reasons.
And I can I just mention something real quick? I also think for the um Parent Square. Um, there are so many great tools and I'm kind of learning more about it as well between Johnson and every middle school. You can also use it for um. Uh, permission forms.
Yes.
Which was, it's, it's so easy. You know, so I, I thought of it when you mentioned, oh, if you have to pay for a field trip or something, it's like you just sign it and then pay and show your proof of payment. It's just such a great.
Start of the year forms.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I think I'm hoping it's gonna make your life easier. You know what I mean? Because it's just all right there.
Yeah. Yes. Yep. Mm-hmm.
Um, so.
Thanks, I'm glad it's working out.
Thank you. Yeah, it's great.
And there's another tutorial, the sixteenth.
Yeah, sign up for it. Yep, we have a, we have an administrative workshop, uh, live. It's nice. Every, every so often they'll do, it's, I think it's every month. Or at the same topics run again, because they know everybody across the country is signing up at different times.
Mm-hmm.
And so I'm registered to do another walkthrough, just so that I can. There are a lot of pieces you can use.
Yeah.
And uh, that concludes.
Thank you.
And my report.
Thank you so much. So moving on to facilities.
Um, Madam Chair, I think I gave most of the facilities update except I do want to uh. Tie in something that happened earlier today with an activity that's going on in the school. Um, under the supervision of uh our Chief of Police. Uh, we are clearing out the ancient items stored underneath our uh gym. Uh, in a. Not so pleasant storage area.
We call it the dungeon.
And we are going to the weekend, uh, the first weekend in December, we're gonna have a group of individuals here working under the supervision of our police department. Uh, taking all those things out, putting them in a dumpster and or dump trucks and getting rid of it. And then our emergency management team is gonna come in and utilize that space. For storing emergency management materials they need in case there is a townwide emergency. So it kind of links to what Mr. Barretta was talking about in terms of, Barletta, excuse me. Uh, in terms of perhaps the kitchen could be used in an extensive emergency. So we're, we're improving the emergency um response by the town. Uh, by allowing them to use our school. Up till now, all the things that will be permanently stored down there for use have been on a trail. And uh. This will wet. Nice to be dragged around, so this, this will be much better for everyone being served.
And there's an other category, but I don't know if you have anything under other.
I had a couple of other things, but I'm gonna hold off till next time because I, I don't know if it's well. I asked of. A nonprofit for one hundred reading books on energy efficiency. For our kindergarten through fourth grade students. And um. Hopefully I'll get it. But they're beautiful books and uh I only have one now. Um, but hopefully by November four, uh, excuse me, by our next meeting in December. Um, I'll have them and the students will have them, teachers will be using them. There's actually a curriculum. That has been cross-referenced with the state uh standards. So um, as we all know how important it is for our students to recognize. That energy is not a limitless. Resource. I watched the, the Ken Burns um. Series on bison. And it was fascinating, not only from, you know. A naturalist point of view, but from psychology. The buffalo hunters were astounded that they killed them. They couldn't believe it. For two years, they went around the, the Great Plains looking for buffalo and couldn't find any because there were none left. At one point, they were eighty-five. The number is estimated at approximately sixteen to nineteen million. When the buffalo hunting began. And it just, it kind of reminded me of all the things we take for granted that we think are limitless.
Yeah.
Hmm, yeah.
And there is no such thing.
Right.
And um, I'm sure if I were walking the Great Plains in, you know, eighteen hundred, I would have said, well, there's so many of these things.
Yeah.
But, you know. In twenty-five years, there were almost none. So we have to be more respectful of, of what we do and this book. Is a step to helping our students learn about uh energy.
That's very nice, very nice. Well, if there's nothing under other, we move on to old business, item B, the superintendent search update. So I wanted to ask both of you. How can I get it to be built tomorrow for our very first superintendent search committee meeting?
Sure, tell me when.
So it will be at six thirty.
Okay.
And I'm gonna have it in this room.
I will uh.
Heidi, um, I'm sorry that I don't, that I don't know the answer for this. When it was the survey or is the survey due? Are people still able to fill that out? When is the deadline? Next, right? Oh, good, okay.
I just got a message on, I just sent you a text. Actually, I, I, I got a message about filling out that survey.
Yeah.
But then it's gone. It shouldn't have been in my email.
No message is gone?
Yeah.
You have Parent Square?
Yeah.
So maybe go back to Parent Square because if not in your email, it'll be in Parent Square. And thank you so much.
As messages or?
Uh, there it is. It's in Parent, it's in the app. Okay.
Yeah. If you, if you like the app, go to the app. If you like your email.
So I have your request for uh. Opinion.
Yeah. And somebody appreciated the post.
Mm-hmm, yes.
Was it you?
Oh, wait, which one?
The, the survey.
Oh, survey. I do try to appreciate all posts though.
Survey. Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Survey's up, yeah.
And anybody, right, right? This wasn't posted.
Community members.
Community members.
Yes.
Right.
Did you think there's zero?
No, I, I had, no, not zero.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I sent it.
Yes, no, you sent, so you sent it, you just sent, yes, but it was only ten.
Okay. Okay.
Oh, ten people? Wow, so, so we need another prompt maybe?
Yes.
Only this place.
Well, that's exactly what this is.
Only ten people.
Oh, I know. I don't remember getting it. I'm sorry, that were.
Only just.
Why, what was this from?
It's written to you prior.
My uh. My survey is flawed.
Oh, it says you can't open them. It's like.
Yeah. Safari wanna open the survey.
Yeah, I get the same message.
All right, we'll work on it.
Uh-oh.
Maybe right now.
That's, that's, oh, it was a priority.
Okay.
Well, it's now posted on social media. The, the superintendent's today for that, it's throughout.
Hmm, it's, it's on our website.
It's on the website too.
I think so.
I'll resend it right now, Ms. Karen.
Yeah.
No, it's okay. I'm glad you guys are testing it out. I think that's why.
What happens is the second line of the URL covers the first line, so there's, there's a damage.
I'll fix it right now.
Okay.
The original link that was sent a week ago works.
Good.
Cause I just pulled it up from that first email that was sent to November first. Message, so.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so I'm hoping to get a little bit more feedback.
Mm-hmm.
Although what has been received was very good feedback. So.
Good.
Like.
Yeah.
Okay, so six thirty tomorrow evening here. Okay, I'll take care of it with James.
Yeah, they'll be here?
Yeah.
So I'll come here earlier. I'll be here by six fifteen. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, so yeah, so we're having our first meeting tomorrow. Glenn um will be here. Massachusetts Association School of News. He's gonna help um guide and drive um other meetings. So it's a good meeting. People looking forward to it. Uh, he also um. Gave me the draft of a job description today. So I want to send it to you to give you your feedback. What, what better person than the person that actually does, does the job?
Has been doing it since uh the bison were running free.
Cause we'd like to get it out in the morning.
Sure, I'd be happy to. An honor to give some feedback.
Absolutely. So I have a, I know you love printed copies, so I have a printed copy. It'd be, I'll email it to you too, so if you would like this, I love yours.
You know, whatever.
And I'll, I'll email it.
Okay, thank you.
I don't see the survey on the website, you guys.
So you can.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you. Great.
So yeah, so we are moving along. We need to find a superintendent.
We do.
Or you're not being a superintendent.
I just wanted to thank you all. I, I really. Job, like getting it done, I totally.
Yeah, I mean, yes.
Yeah, I'm watching you.
Yeah, seriously. Thank you so much.
Some people that actually joined.
Yes, I know, it's so.
I was like, oh.
So do you nine, you still still or what?
I'm fourteen.
Fourteen? Yeah. Wait, isn't that great?
It's a lot, it's a lot of people, but you know what? I guarantee you some that are.
Okay. You guarantee it's fourteen people in the community?
Yeah.
Fourteen people in the community? Oh, wow, okay. And so those are teachers?
So we have three current teachers here at the Johnson School. We have one former retired teacher from the Johnson School. We have and myself and nine other community members, some of whom have children here at the Johnson School.
Right.
So, yeah. Well, that's a great look.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yeah, I really.
Gosh, yeah.
No, no, my, my, my pleasure. I usually want to talk things, just increase it. Um, please don't uh.
Yes.
Yes. Talk negatively about, you know, the things that have done, you've done a magical job.
Yeah. And you'll be back tomorrow night.
Yes.
Better my. My pleasure. So moving on to policies, our favorite topic. We have some second meetings to do.
I am, yes.
Mm-hmm.
I, I.
I am very.
Yeah.
I'm ready to roll.
I'm very desperate.
Like we did last time. Yeah, as well, right?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
You did a great job.
Thanks, guys.
So, um. Madam Chair, the first pile is uh labeled under seven D through. Madam Chair, the first pile is uh labeled under seven D through Q.
Okay.
And um. Policy E F D.
Hold on, so. Yes, yes, E F E seventy, and it goes through, sorry, what did you say? Q?
Q.
Or is the one that we've already read?
Yes, this is for a second reading and approval, as the school committee so chooses. And. They need to be done in one policy at a time.
Yep. And where's Q? Everybody find it already?
They're talking. I'm sorry, I apologize.
Oh, 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 I see.
Just.
Wow, Yana.
Yeah. If you just come to the room, you'll you'll.
Got it. You'll just stop me when it's time.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. All right, um. I would like to make a motion to approve seven D civil rights complaint policy for child nutrition programs, file E F E. Second, all in favor? Um I would like to make a motion to approve file G B A equal employment opportunity.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
I I would like to make a motion to approve. File G C F professional staff hiring, second, all in favor? Um I would like to make a motion to approve file I V academic freedom, second.
Madam Chair, a discussion on this one. There's a question I attached, uh math general law chapter seventy-one, section two. Which was a reference in the existing um policy. But for some reason, M A S C left it out on this one. Um. And it refers to the teaching of history of social studies, and I recommend that we leave it out. I guess they didn't put it, but I did want to point that out.
Okay. Um, so we had second.
We did. Do you want to do it again? Do you do it again?
All in favor?
I. I'd like to make a motion to approve file I C I C A school year school calendar.
Madam Chair, I I uh. Omit, took out paragraph three on this.
Okay.
Second, second, all in favor?
I. I'd like to make a motion to approve file I D school day, second.
All in favor?
I. I'd like to make a motion to approve file I E organization of instruction, second.
Madam Chair, I. Corrected the fourth paragraph in this.
Okay. Up to, yep, very good, yep. Got it.
Second, second, all in favor?
Oh, I. I'd like to make a motion to approve file I H B special instructional programs and accommodations. Programs for children with special needs, second.
All in favor?
Um I'd like to make a motion to approve file I G B student services programs, second.
All in favor?
I I'd like to make a motion to approve file I G A I G D curriculum development and adoption, second.
All in favor?
I. I'd like to make a motion to approve. File I H A M health education, second.
Madam Chair, question on this one. I left K through six on this. I believe that was the intention of the committee.
Yes.
Right?
Okay.
All in favor?
Oh, I. I. I'd like to make a motion to approve file I H A M A parental notification relative to sex education, second.
All in favor?
I. I'd like to make a motion to approve file I H P A student services program.
Second, all in favor?
I. I'd like to make a motion to file I H B D compensatory education, second, all in favor?
I. That was cute.
Yep. Excellent.
Thank you.
Now, moving on to new business, I'm going to be having a fees for the twenty twenty-four, the twenty twenty-five school year. And a professional development day report, we're looking on a policy.
Yes, ma'am. Uh eight B is in your packets, the next document. It's the preschool tuition rates. Uh I am recommending no change in the before school, the small program we have for parents who need to drop their children off as early as seven A M. I'm recommending no change in that rate. I'm recommending no change in the preschool tuition rates, which are before you. And I'm recommending no change in the lunch program because we're not charging for the lunch program. We would have no idea what the reason for. Uh because the Fed, the feds are are paying for it, and it's fully funded for this entire school year. My assumption is the current amount of three fifty would cover the cost in. September two thousand twenty. Four through June. Two thousand twenty-five, if the state changes their position on universal free lunch. I don't know what else to do. So I just wanted to bring this to your attention because it's on your calendar to do this month, so parents would have plenty of time. If there is a change.
Yes, my only question is, without increasing the costs, can we cover? All of the costs?
Yes. I built a cost of break even point at about. Uh twenty-two students in preschool. So we actually have a healthy plan. So healthy. That I am withdrawing from the early childhood of fee program. Uh and I'll give you multiple reasons. Number one is their requirements for being in a program are. So time consuming and so intrusive. That they are problematic. Example. They want a separate set of fingerprints done on a regular basis. In their system. For anyone who works with the preschool child. Well, we do a query check, we do fingerprints before we hire anybody. Now I'm gonna have to ask people to get a regular expensive fingerprint done. On a regular basis, uh which is right now every two years. And our fingerprints that we do in our query checks are not acceptable to them. They have to be in their system. They want our personnel records to be. To include professional development. And I believe the last time I counted them, that would be eighteen hours of paid professional development. That's fine if you're a early childhood program who's hiring people without an education. We have masters leveled teachers. They could teach these courses, not take them. Uh. Plus, I would have to go to the union and say. Your members have to take this course. And I'm not comfortable with that. Right now, we have one student. That the program is paying for. We have two other students on the waiting list. Of sixteen thousand students. There are sixteen thousand preschool students waiting to be approved for paying. My guess. My guess is none of them will be in preschool by the time anyone's approved. And I think it may be um. If not purposeful, I don't think there's a rush to approve. So um I've been talking, I talked to both of the teachers, they're fine with it. I looked at finances, we can cover. These students every year with no problem.
Those are very low fees.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, the paperwork was killing Chris. The annual reapplication is forty-seven pages. Repetition all the things I told you.
Right, right.
So we're not doing it anymore. With, by the way. The school district has had. Super successful preschool program for decades without that. It was one of my worst ideas.
Moving on to professional development days.
And we covered this sheet.
Yes.
Yeah.
Under the principal's report.
Excellent. So now we can move on to new policy.
Okay, Madam Chair, it's on me now. Really, just relax. So none of, uh there's no motions required. I do want to talk about um. Policy I H B E A. Which is uh E D, that is an English language learner education policy. That's a new policy as of April two thousand nineteen. We do not have it in our policy manual. I recommend that you consider putting it in as it's. Next one is policy I H B F homebound instruction. Uh you need to identify the uh proper administrator. I'm assuming it would be the superintendent of schools, but I didn't want to make that assumption without checking the view first. We don't have a director of pupil services. And I do it, so, okay?
Your current role? Yep, I can, it's yours.
Thank you for that wonderful responsibility. Uh and then, of course, we will take the note out. Policy I H B G. Our policy is. Pretty up to date, but the source once it updated two thousand twenty-three. If you go, if you look at the current policy, the first sheet. The last two paragraphs have been omitted. Student being educated in a home-based program within the district may have access to public school activities of either a critical blah blah blah. Uh and then a student with the approval of the school meeting may be awarded high school diploma. Both of those have been omit. Uh taken out by M A S C. And then there's a note on the new policy that says, quote, a student being educated in a home-based program with district may have access. To public school activities of either a critical or extracurricular nature, upon approval of the superintendent. So that's why they're out. I guess uh under the new laws, it's the superintendent who makes that program. I have never approved that. Because I have found it to be. Problematic in a large district where you had a student who was home. School and they came in for band orchestras, football, volleyball. Um clubs. Uh and then there were incidences in my past careers where. The only. Disciplinary avenue is to remove the student from the activity. And then lawyers got involved. Because they're not in your school, so you can't. Give them uh detention or suspension. You can't have your guidance counselor talk to them. There's almost no um appropriate action if there are problems. So with your permission, I'd like to just take that note out and leave the policy the way it is. If a parent has an interest, they can always petition the superintendent. That's in the law. Okay? So that's I H B G home school. Uh alternative school programs, it's not in our current manual. And I'm not sure we need it.
I was just gonna ask, I read this one, I'm not sure if it's funny.
Yeah. I. Don't believe we would need this as an elementary district. Uh but I defer to you. I defer to you.
Oh, for those who. Yep, it's mostly a high school, sometimes a middle school.
Yeah.
Um and um mostly high school situation.
In my case, which is okay.
Yeah, and the way this reads, and I did. I collect some feedback from Ms. Anderson. It's an in-district alternative program. It doesn't. You know, it's not like the virtual high school where the virtual, uh there's there's a petition in front of the commissioner now for a virtual elementary school. It would be Zoom taught.
Yeah.
That.
And this usually, it's, you know, this is an opinion, it's a pathway to hell, um shouldn't happen this way, but um.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would, I would, it's. There are alternative elementary schools. It is heartbreaking to see that it's usually as a system failure, not instrument failure.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we could take it out. The only thing that, like classically, that's not what alternative it means, right? Like if we were in the seventies right now, we'd be having.
Absolutely.
Right? And there is some, I'll just say this aloud, this is totally not, I'll say it because it's on my mind, but. When I look at the high costs of some of the programs that we have to send kids, have to send kids to. I do dream of a different way because in a small district, it's um we are privileged to actually know who those kids are. Some of them and the ones that have been involved. And as an educator working, you know, with knowing some of those kids as our parents. And like, there are other ways to cut this apple than than this type of thing. So if we were to ever try to do something like that, which is so not on our docket right now at all. It would be um. We would need to pack a policy like this, but um we can always put it in if we ever wanted to do something that hard up there. I just, I did some quick brainstorming to, and I had to ask in my head, is this child getting a two hundred and forty thousand dollar a year education? You know, and when you think about it in those terms.
Yeah.
Right? Twelve months times twelve thousand dollars a month. Um uh and um twenty thousand dollars a month, you know? I'm like, uh wow, just maybe, I've been thinking about it all. All right, I'm done, sorry. No, it's, I.
Yeah, I I infer, um I was a superintendent and a teacher for over twenty years in New York State, which is. Run on a board of cooperative educational services called B O C system. Every X number of districts in the entire state, and there are seven hundred and nineteen school districts in the state of New York. Belongs to a cooperative services district. That cooperative services district handles all of the, what we call out of district special education for fraction. We beg. It's it's a system of collaboratives.
Right.
But it's organized, it's all under the regions and the superintendent.
Still.
The commissioner of education, they have their own superintendent. And uh. I personally know a person who retired from a local school district. Is now running a private out of district placement. And his, he is making three hundred thousand dollars a year.
Yep.
That's what the Boston superintendent pays. For a fraction rate of. Responsibility, yeah, it's. Uh I can tell you, our our special education. Director. Really goes through. All of the options. Feasible.
Yeah.
Prior to um. Prior to approving and. Asking me to sign a contract. And there are. For that one student, there are extraordinary circumstances.
Yes, I, it is more, it is a question that I'm asking as an educator, not.
Yeah.
And the hot person. I I totally trust the the process, and there are students that absolutely have to have a separate placement. It's that the cost is so jacked up, and so you have to ask, like, I'm not asking the question, should the student be here versus there? Like, do you think there are, there is a world where we could ask that of some students, not these two, right? But the um you have to like, just as a human being and a taxpayer, say, is this child, wherever they are. Getting a two hundred and forty thousand dollar education? Like, what the hell is that? That's college.
Yeah.
And and when you ask it in those terms, just as like a educated person. It does make you think of that things that go on a little haywire.
Yeah.
Right? That's all, that's all I'm saying. And that is true, I'm just wasting our time right now, so I don't, it's.
I'm I'm not sure there's a solution because we live in in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. The parochialism here is mind-boggling.
Yes.
There are fourteen hundred and seventy-nine elementary schools. There are fourteen hundred and seventy-nine elementary schools, public elementary schools. Do you know there are over five hundred and fifty private elementary schools in this state? That's, that's one out of four.
Correct.
Think about that. I had the pleasure of going to Dex- Dexter Smith Field.
Oh, yeah.
Over the, two weekends ago, to, for, uh, the bed of my youngest grandson. Seventy thousand dollars a year for high school. This is a day school. Which means it costs more to go to that private school in Newton than it does to any Ivy League college in the country. Because there are a little bit more, but you live there. So you have room and board, right?
Right.
Preschool at Dexter. Or the.
Forty thousand. Oh, my goodness. Wow.
They have a planet carrying.
He's probably forty thousand dollars, really huge.
If you say something that shakes up this system we have in this state, there are gonna be real problems, real pushbacks. I mean, it's a major industry. And that, and that's, that's one of five hundred. Right?
Level here.
Yeah. Okay, Madam Chair.
Remote learning.
Remote learning is a new policy, uh, I H B H E, and I recommend we just put it in. The cross-references are mind-boggling. And of course, this is, uh, based on, um, verbal rights.
Um, Mr. Karen Tati, hi. I don't, I caught my eye when I was getting this through and maybe I, maybe I would have wondered. Was there something about, um, an extended providing materials for students who had extended leave and going through this process of, um, having instruction? I don't think it was the remote learning one, was it?
No, it's, uh.
Was it instructional materials? That's next.
I, I do know what you mean, and it is somewhere in here.
It is somewhere.
Yeah, we are responsible for free and appropriate public education for any student who lives within the confines of our, uh,
Yeah. Yeah.
geographic area. Uh, that would include, um, students who are hospitalized.
Yes.
That would include students who are homebound.
So I get to reading it, what is the question of like, you know, obviously for extended absences like that, you know, we have to have something in place, but it almost made me feel like students who are like out for a week or something like that, wouldn't be able to have access to instructional materials? Like, I just was kind of curious about, like, it's like a long process.
No, our, our, our procedures are to provide instructional materials for students who are even out Sunday, or half a day.
Yes. And that's what I thought, but I believe the policy just gave it to you like it was.
Yeah.
This is when it's all about instructions.
Homebound instruction.
Yeah.
How we just did?
Yep. This would make furniture about instruction, students must be in a home, for a hospital, on a daily, overnight basis, for medical reasons, fourteen days, any school year, maintenance of basic academic courses. The student needs a written statement, is that something?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we totally agree back there.
Yeah, we're, yeah, I'm good with it.
Okay.
Yes, but I guess I just wanted to make sure that for students who, um, like, they don't need a written, written statement from a medical doctor, I guess. Like, we don't, they don't have to go to the, it's like.
That is for,
This is for extended.
That policy is for an extended period of time.
Well, thank you. I just wanted to clarify, make sure I was there.
That would be if someone, uh, was in a hospital for two months. The reason it's fourteen days because it gives you enough time to set it up.
Yes.
As compared to, you know, Tony was coughing yesterday and he went home.
Yeah, okay, perfect. Thank you.
Okay. Um, Madam Chair, um, next one is I J. Uh, we have an I J, as you can see, uh, the, um, the date is new and, um, number five on ours, the word preference has been changed to orientation. So it's been modernized. Okay?
Oh, thank you. It's actually even more modern. I'm not gonna dispute it, but, um, uh, more, more modernized, so now sexual identity is more the term.
Would you like to do that?
Um, I mean, if it's not a problem, yeah, it could be, yeah. Is that good?
Sure.
All right, because it speaks to who you are inside as a identity marker.
As compared to behaviors.
Defining, as opposed to behaviors and defining a person based on their, yeah, right, right, so it's a far more inclusive, yeah.
Our policy has preference.
Yeah, that's not good.
Uh, okay, I will change it to identity in the next round. Um, I J L is a current policy that we have. And the references have been added to I J L. No big deal. I included in, uh, no, maybe I didn't. Library materials and selection is now being changed to I J L dash R. And we have it, but the new one, I J dash R, excuse me, I, I J L dash R is being changed to reconsideration. So you still have the material selection and adoption, and now the one because of what's happening in our world that has become much more detailed is I J dash R, which is the, um, reconsideration of instructional materials.
Mm-hmm, so that is, that would replace the I J L dash R.
That would replace
Yeah.
I J L dash R. Yes. Because it now isn't, isn't just about library materials. That's why the L is not there anymore.
Okay.
And I recommend you don't touch that with a ten-foot pole.
Yeah.
Okay, um, I J O A, the field trip one, has been, uh, updated to include, uh, what you do with overnight and we do have in our, uh, manual, an I J O A dot dash one, which is what the note refers to. So we, we do have that. In addition, our form that staff members fill out for field trips is even more detailed. So we're in good shape with field trips. I K A B student progress reports. Uh, I believe this is one. The new one has, it's just been updated. It's not very much different. It's a little bit different, but uh, on the new one, if you notice, it says assistant superintendent. We don't have one of those.
Do you?
Superintendent.
Superintendent, yep.
I love to be important. Okay. Graduation requirements. I don't think we need this.
No, in high school, no.
Okay. Student submission to educational surveys and research. I don't think we need this either because our students are so young that
Right.
Any researcher would go directly to their parents, not, I mean, if somebody contacted me, I'd say no.
Yeah. No.
Okay. It's my guess, but. Okay, I M B, teaching about controversial issues or controversial subjects. Um, we passed this one within the last few years, but I can't find anything different. I read, I read it twice, but I'm just gonna reread it one more time. I think we're all set with this. We just put the cross-reference update two thousand twenty-three and we're done. Okay? Animals in schools. Okay, this one is a little wacky.
Can I, before we get to working animals in schools? I'm a fan of animals in schools.
Whatever.
Um, I, I, the controversial issues, controversial speakers. The only thing that for me feels missing in this is that there are some things that should not be up for discussion, you know, like identity, um, the identity of students and families shouldn't, should not be up for discussion, right? Like, we don't get to discuss. Um, you need to have any opinions, some of the language here is, um, you just must ensure that reasonable arguments of all sides issue, um, approach to discussion of the issue, um, this idea of like balance, that can go, when you're talking about like, um, you, you know, coastal, LGBTQ, uh, rights and things like that, sometimes policies have been interpreted as like, well, I don't, my house, like, we don't, we wouldn't date people, you don't like them, you don't even, you know, they're predator or whatever. And so I wanna be able to say my side. And you've got a kid in the class who's gay, or you've got a kid who's a gay family. And so, I don't, I, I just wanted to raise it to make sure that we're being protective of those kids or, um, and you could, you know, their racial arguments.
Oh, yeah.
Right, so just making sure that like, identity doesn't get relegated to be a controversial issue. Homophobia, right, and how in-inclusivity, um, and how that is rolling out in our country certainly was controversial about, right, I'm not, you know, um, I'm not saying that there's not. So then the conversation would act about that, not about the people themselves, right? You know what I mean?
Yes.
Fair as money.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Um, which I think sort of falls back on the teacher because it's.
And the schools.
The, uh, no, of course, but I'm just saying, like, the situation that you bring to light is like, in that event, you would hope that the teacher can sort of understand where that child may not want to speak up would be coming from, or, I don't, I mean, I think it's like, it's not really that.
Right.
And, and so that's where you would hold up the teacher.
Before any of you were on the school committee, five and four years ago, we went through quite the
Yeah.
transition from an ancient philosophic school district regarding gender identity to a very up-to-date one. I had, um, people from D E S C come in and talk to the staff, or the parents, we had meetings at night. Uh, we have neutral bathrooms.
Yeah.
So we're, I think, in pretty good shape. Um, and we haven't had one of the parents of the individual students who were going through the, um, challenges of identification actually publicly thanked me and the school district at a meeting of about two hundred educators. The person was actually brought in by the D E S C to speak and said how well we had handled. Unfortunately, there was a parent who thought we did everything wrong.
There always is.
Yeah.
There always is.
So, um, I think we, we have.
Yeah, my comment, I, um, uh, I mean, since I brought up LGBTQ families as an example, I will say like as one, I feel completely welcome here in the hot, in the school district. This has been great. Hundred, I a hundred percent agree with you, uh, you know, wherever that path, and I know the family, wherever that path led, right, you know, and, and go us. I think like, I am, you know, I'm thinking all the time, we are getting, we have to have policies that stand when we're, this isn't the school committee, you're not the superintendent.
Right.
Right, and that gets those days. And I guess watching some of the rights that, like, our family had rights um, five years ago, that we don't have now.
Yeah.
And protections, right? Um, and I, maybe naively because I'm an American and I've just not seen the world act like this before, in our country acted this in fifty-four years. Um, I can't believe what I'm seeing right now.
Yeah.
You know, and I am worried about it. I'm worried about the, the same canon books in school on, on all sides. I'm, I'm, I'm worried about it also, like, these are important policies, right? Um, and so I don't even know what I'm supposed to, I just want it, I'm not, I don't have language, I'm not saying, I'm just,
Yeah, you wanna be fine.
I want, I guess I want more than just, well, the, the teacher will, you know, like, hoping the teachers are, you know, progressive, or I don't even know what words, but that's, but like, you know, I, um, right, and, uh, and I, I just don't want children's lives and identity and be, and, and whether they're gonna be traumatized in school or not, or separated.
Yeah, yeah.
The, the policies are to protect that, right? Right, so that we protect kids, all black kids, gay kids, you know, kids with single-parent homes, whatever they are, right? I, I mean, so I just, I looked at this about controversial issues, knowing that sometimes I have had my life and my children's lives be up for debate. Right, and we finally, at least until about two years ago, got to a man where that wasn't okay. And now it feels like, you know, the world has shifted, so schools have to hang on to protect kids.
Yeah.
And so, and that, I'm saying as educators, so I don't know, like, I might, we're not voting until next time.
Yeah.
Maybe because I'm raising it, it's incumbent upon me to look at this and maybe suggest. If there's another thing to suggest, I'll suggest it.
Well, there, there's two different areas that you may be concerned about and wanna look at. One is removing materials from student use because of apparent demand.
Yep.
That's not this policy.
I read that one. That looked.
We have, and we have a procedure.
Yep.
And we follow it.
Yeah.
And we have, I'll tell you exactly how many complaints about our materials we have had. Right, that area one. Um, I'm hopeful that the end of this period of time in America is coming to a close. Or diminishing, I'm not sure, you never know. So I, I'm really comfortable with that, you know, we, we have, uh, you know, I Stabler's committee, I put library from the town on it, we look at something and, um, and then a decision's made by the committee, the committee members, if you, you may define a determination. We haven't had any. This, about controversy, this is really very clearly in the hands of the principal. Nobody comes in, nobody talks to kids, nobody posts anything, nobody does anything without the principal giving it okay. So you may wanna look at that and you may wanna give, in your wisdom, you may wanna give the principal some oversight. That's up to you. Okay?
Okay.
All right, all right. The service animal one is interesting because it was very negative. And what MASC did is they divided it into two policies. The first one is animals in school and they took out all the UCANS. And they also took out all references to service animals. And then they put all the service animal references in a new um, policy and it's been updated, so. uh, I recommend that, uh, I read through this a couple of times. Now, our animals in school policy was brought to I wrote, I brought it to you from MASC a couple of years, uh, well, that's four years ago now. So it was pretty updated. It wasn't like ancient. This one is even more updated. It says, basically, animals are okay in school. You've got to take the health into consideration. And then service animals are different. That's basically what these two said.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. And on those same lines, are we revisiting pet therapy? Remember, we had that dog last year, but um, is the dog coming back?
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I haven't heard anything about it.
Neither have I, now that you mentioned it.
And the kids loved it. Mommy, mommy?
I don't know. Who's the doctor?
I'll, I'll find one. Okay.
Yeah, um, I'll find out. You're right. I haven't heard anything about it either.
I feel like I love being the picture, but um.
Okay.
Excellent. Thank you. So do we have any other committee decisions about this? No. You have any?
No.
No.
I have a motion to adjourn.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting at nine sixty-two P M.
I second the motion, Nate, I'm just a little.
Alan Piper.
Hi. I'm trying to find the um I was trying to find the newsletter, I want to see it.
McGee.
McGee.
I don't know how.
It wasn't.
It's scary.